Welcome, everyone, here and at home, to the February 23 City Council meeting. First up is the Public Forum. The Public Forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings officials or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing or forum. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. So, we have, I guess I should officially open that, and we have seven people signed up. First up is Robin Blumgarden, followed by Robin Cassidy Duran.
My name is Robin Blumgarden, and I live in the Whittaker. I'm in Claire's district. Many Eugene residents are supportive of and are advocating for a carbon tax for Oregon. A report from the Northwest Economic Research Center at Portland State University, known as the NERC report, was recently completed for the legislature, which showed that a carbon tax can make a significant contribution to Oregon's overall greenhouse gas emissions goals, and that the impact of a carbon tax policy would have relatively small impacts on our economy. Now that we have those results, many Eugene residents like myself are moving forward with advocacy at both local and state levels. Eugene's own Sustainability Commission voted on December 17 last year to recommend, request, that the Eugene City Council pass a resolution which says, "The City Council of Eugene calls on the Oregon State Legislature to craft legislation carefully to impose a carbon tax or fee, relying on modeling described in the NERC report and the experience of British Columbia, with special attention to mitigating the impacts on low-income Oregonians." You should have seen this resolution by now. I strongly urge all of you to work quickly to move the resolution to a vote in favor. This will be an important tool for advocating change at the statewide level during the legislative session, which just began on February 2. When you pass this resolution, we will be proud to let our legislators know that the city of Eugene is in favor of putting a price on carbon in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robin Cassidy Duran, followed by John Iglesias.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? All right. My name is Robin Cassidy Duran. I'm a citizen of Eugene, Ward 7. The National Court Reporters Association, the country's leading organization representing stenographic court reporters and broadcast captioners, announced February 15 to 21 National Court Reporting and Captioning Week. The Awareness Week pulls together a nationwide effort to highlight the contributions of stenographic court reporters and captioners to society, and to showcase the career opportunities that exist in the court reporting and captioning fields. I've been a stenographic court reporter for over 25 years, and was a graduate of Lang Community Colleges Program in Eugene. I've been a member of NCRRA for 28 years and have earned nationally-recognized credentials, including Registered Professional Reporter. The Oregon Court Reporters Association invited you to join in showcasing this unique vocation and helping to increase public awareness. Court reporters have had and do have a large impact on capturing history for posterity. Stenographic skills translate to a multitude of career options, including court reporting, live event captioning for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, captioning for broadcast and specialized videography, and the strong marketplace demand means court reporting offers an abundance of long-term career opportunities. Captioners do wonderful work to help better the lives for millions of Americans who are deaf and hard-of-hearing by providing captioning in real-time for live sporting and theater events, church services, movie houses, and many other venues. In an emergency situation, broadcast captioners can provide vital information to 48 million Americans who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. I wish to thank all of those individuals in the city of Eugene who have supported stenographic reporting, not only in providing services to the legal community, but our endeavor to provide live captioning for the Hope Center performances, sporting, educational, and entertainment events at the University of Oregon, and Eugene City Council meetings since 2009. On behalf of the stenographic community, thank you so much, Mayor Piercy, for your support in proclaiming February 15 through 21 as Oregon Court Reporting and Captioning Week. Thank you.
Thank you. John Iglesias is next, followed by Mike Seto. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am John Iglesias, President and CEO of Northwest Community Credit Union. Our new support center is in Counselor Zelenka's ward. I'm here tonight to say thank you on behalf of the Northwest Community Credit Union's 100,000-plus members, our Board of Directors, and 284 employees, including 157 at our new support center and downtown branch next to the federal courthouse. From the time we began negotiating to buy the property through permitting, construction, and all the way through final inspection, the city of Eugene has been a pleasure to work with on this most important project for our members. We look forward to sharing the value of our services with the entire community in the coming year. As many of you know, we began construction on the new support center in 2013. We moved in during December 2014, and completed the new branch in February of this year. I particularly want to acknowledge the leadership and good work of the city manager and assistant city manager, and to express my appreciation for the excellent professionals at the Department of Planning and Development and Public Works Department, in particular for their professional and timely support. Because of their guidance and solution-oriented approach, we brought the support center online, on time, and within budget. I love to say those three words. I also want you to know that we have applied for Silver Lead Certification. Ralph Brokaw, our architect, Chase Mixes, our owner's representative, and Anderson Construction, our builder, did an excellent job to design and build our support center to stand the test of time, in a way that complements the city's initiatives to be a sustainable community. We are thankful for their talents and partnership. Again, I want to thank you, the city manager, staff, and partners, for helping Northwest Community Credit Union's support center become a reality, and we hope, a point of pride for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Seto is next, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
My name is Mike Seto, and I live in the River Road District area. I'm here to ask you to get involved in helping to get annual inspection of emissions for all motor vehicles. I understand this is a county issue. I mean, I did talk to my representative, Pat Farr, on Friday the 13th, and he agreed with me that a lot of people want this to happen, and so I'd ask you to do anything in your power to help him and get these annual emissions tests mandated for all motor vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen is next, followed by Beverly Potter.
I live downtown. I'm here today because of the conditions in the downtown. This morning, while I was running my errands, I was greeted at Broadway Plaza by the crew there yelling, "Lick your nipple for a dollar." This is a frequent occurrence down there. Not only is that sexual harassment, but it's prostitution. And this goes on every day downtown, yet I never see it by the Duck Store or Taylor's Bar. Nobody ever sits in front of the Glenwood saying, "Buy me a burger," with two pit bulls at their side. Never. And downtown, it's a nightly, daily occurrence. We need drug and alcohol counselors downtown. We need child protective services downtown, and we need mental health care workers walking our streets 24/7. These issues are driving away businesses. I don't know anyone who's come downtown for a movie and dinner with their family and not been harassed or almost run over on the sidewalk. This has hurt everyone's income. The camping protests nearly devastated Saturday Market and other businesses down here, and this has gone on for a long time. And I'm sorry, but I can't pay my medical bills. I can't even get three meals a day anymore. Yet, we've got city officials who make six-figure incomes who are doing nothing about it. And I don't see it in other parts of town, just the downtown. It feels pretty targeted. So many times down here, it is so family-unfriendly, and I don't see any of you guys bringing your children down here, except for maybe Kitty's kids, who are part of the problem. And quite frankly, until I start seeing you bring your children down here and showing me family-friendly, I'm going to keep coming and talking about this, because this is a very big issue. We need help down here, and we need some ordinances that stop this kind of harassment and stop the prostitution, stop the drug dealing. This doesn't help anyone. It's totally derailed the revitalization. And quite honestly, I'm tired of it. I have to live down here. I don't have the money to go anywhere else. I don't get to take vacations. I don't even remember what the sky looks like at night outside of the downtown city area. And this is just, it's uncalled for. And I'm not going to stay to hear your comments, because quite honestly, I can no longer hear the words over the ka-ching of your wallets. Thank you.
Beverly Potter is next, followed by Cindy Connolly.
Hi, my name is Beverly Potter. I live in the southeast neighborhoods. I'm also the Director of Food for Lane County, and I am the current Chair of the Health and Human Services Network of Service Providers. And on behalf of the network, I'm here to say thank you for the funding that you have given us to help us improve and protect the well-being of our neighborhoods and our neighbors. As you know, Food for Lane County strives to ease hunger in our community. Last month, while I was volunteering at St. Vincent de Paul's food pantry over Highway 99, in came a man who was so exuberant and loud, I couldn't help but hear him. So when he came to where I was stationed, I was nosy enough to ask him what he was so excited about, and he told me he got a job. He finally got a job. He was a union plumber. He never, ever needed any food assistance, ever, when he was employed, but with the past five years, that wasn't what was going on for him. And so, he had some construction jobs up in Portland, but not many. But he understood what was going on, so he saved his money in between every job, trying to get the money to last. But the jobs were fewer and farther between, and the money didn't last, and he lost his house. So then he went on food stamps, and then started coming in for food boxes. I heard all of that, because he was so excited, he couldn't wait to tell me. But he got a job. He was helping to do a union job up in Portland, and this was the last food box he was ever going to need. He was coming in for lunch fixings, to make his lunches before he got his first paycheck. So, I was so pleased to be there to hear that story, because that's our purpose, is to provide temporary assistance for people who just need a helping hand while they're down. And so luckily, he probably won't be coming back. Food for Lane County has changed the mix of our food dramatically that we distribute to respond to all the diabetes and obesity and problems in our county and our country. Our food selections now offer nutritious food, fruits and vegetables, whole grains, low fat, low sugar, low sodium. Now, we're offering, we brought a nutritionist on class, and we're offering nutrition classes, cooking-from-scratch classes, grocery store shopping classes, and gardening. Thank you for supporting the many of nonprofits through funding through the Health and Human Services who are working very hard to stabilize and offer stability and resiliency to our families and individuals. We really appreciate your investment in us. Thank you very much.
Cindy Connolly is next. Cindy?
I hope this is an appropriate time to speak about the annexation.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm Cindy Connolly. I live in South Eugene. I'm in Betty's district. But I'm a businessperson, and my business is related to growth and development and houses. But my long lifetime devotion is to children and families. And in view of the news of the accident in Springfield, I want to urge you, and the traffic department, and the planners, to carefully consider how you're going to handle the traffic in the neighborhood that is being developed off of River Road. It's very close to Spring Creek School. There are a lot of children that go through, and I want to compliment the planners on how they laid out the streets to the north of this area. And if there are streets that are going to be what you call, I guess, neighborhood collectors that come to the south, I would urge you to have traffic calming things, so you do not have people jetting down onto Irvington through these quiet neighborhoods at 40 miles an hour. So, thank you.
Thank you. And to close the public hearing, and thank everyone who's showed up, and ask if Counselor Clark...
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate everyone's comments and testimony this evening. I wanted to say for the benefits of my colleagues that it is my opinion that Kimberly Glazer is not exaggerating, and it's not hyperbole. It's much worse, actually, than she mentioned. I would never take my children downtown in the center of our town, and I walk through it every single day. I walk through the center of downtown every single day in the afternoon, and am on guard in the process. Now, we've changed how we ask our officers to enforce in our downtown corps as of a couple of months ago, and it's my opinion that that's not a good idea. I want to just say this at the appropriate time, having heard from her, that when it comes to budget time, I'm going to ask the managers, so I'm kind of giving you a preview, for the dollar amount necessary to restore the city prosecutor's budget to the prosecution levels that they were in the business of doing three months ago. I want to know what that money is, how much that would take to do, because I believe we should return to that policy that we had with that minimal level of enforcement in our downtown just a few months ago. I'm hopeful that enough of my colleagues will agree that we'll be able to give our system the ability to address the problem that we're having. And it's not just me, and it's not just the young lady that spoke tonight to feel this way. As I was walking through this afternoon, I'm on my way from the MX bus stop back towards the county building here. I'm not going to name them, but I'm going to say a business owner downtown who's been involved for a very, very long time in our community stopped me just a half-block shy of Keesey Plaza, pointed over and said, "That's absolutely going to kill us down here." This is a business owner who is not politically conservative by any stretch of the imagination, and is widely respected, I know, by everyone at this table. And I said, "I would agree. I think we have a problem we need to address better." And so I told him I would work on that as best I could. So, when we get to budget time, I guess is the only appropriate time for us to do that. I will hope to see those numbers.
Counselor Taylor, and then Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I was walking downtown today also. I frequently walk downtown in the morning. Today, I was walking in the afternoon, and I didn't have any problems. I saw a young man riding a skateboard. I asked him to carry it, and he said, "Okay." He picked it up and carried it. And I saw a lot of people gathered. I walked by the library, I walked into the new hamburger place and the new cupcake shop and talked to people, and they both told me, both places, I was told that business is good. And I bought a tiny cupcake, which I didn't eat yet, but anyway, I didn't have the same kind of experience. There were a lot of people, and the person whom I asked to pick up a skateboard, he was very polite. I did see one person teasing a dog, and I suggested that that wasn't a good idea, but I didn't stick around to see what happened. Thanks.
Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, contrary to what some of the comments I've heard earlier, I go downtown with my family several times usually, and don't have any problems with it. So, I just don't want people out there saying, "Downtown is this unsafe." Or something. Lively now, as it's been in the last 40 years. Turnabout since the years of the aftermath of the urban renewal. It's taken a long time to get back to this point. Things are not perfect. Yeah, there's still some problems. Sure, there are. Most of them are common to most downtowns in the United States, other cities that I've been to. I just want to assure people that there is absolutely no problem going downtown with your children. I do it all the time. Thank you.
Counselor Seoret.
Yeah, thanks to everyone who came to speak. I wanted to address the last speaker who raised concerns about the annexation on River Road, which will be the first step in a potential development there. And our Public Works Director is in the audience, so I'm hoping he took note of that as well. I also got emails from someone in River Road as well. So I do think that's something we want to be aware of as that development goes forward, assuming it does, that thinking about how we manage the traffic, both within the neighborhood and along River Road itself, I think will be very critical to that being a successful addition to the neighborhood. And we do have some better pedestrian crossings on River Road that have been put in in the last couple of years, so I think that will be helpful and a good step towards creating a safer environment there as more traffic is added. So, thanks for your input on that.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, ready to move on, then. Next item is a consent calendar. Counselor President.
Where's my motion? I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No hands up. I'm going to ask for all those in favor. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. None in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much. Item number three is an ordinance concerning delegating authority to city manager for removal of chemicals. I don't think it goes exactly like that, but you don't have to remove any chemicals. Anyway, go ahead and explain it.
Thanks, Mayor. As a housekeeping revision for routine changes to ensure primary components of the Eugene Toxics Right to Know program remain current with the associated regulatory programs at the federal, national, and state levels, and to continue efforts to streamline processes, the Toxics Board recommends adoption of an ordinance for code amendments to Chapter 3, delegating authority to the city manager to remove chemicals from the program's list of reportable chemicals, and to update the hazardous substance tracking instructions.
Counselor President, you want to put it out on the...
I move to adopt Council Bill 5140, an ordinance delegating authority to the city manager for removal of chemicals from the hazardous substances list.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to point out, for anyone who's not familiar with this, hasn't read this over, or anyone watching... Oh, thank you. Mind to that. And this is in the ordinance. The city manager may remove a chemical pursuant to subsection 2 of the section only if the Toxics Board has recommended its removal. So, it doesn't mean that the manager can capriciously just decide to, "Hey, I'm just for the heck of it going to remove chemical A, B, and C just for fun." No, it doesn't work that way. It has to be vetted by the Toxics Board, and it has to be a good reason to remove something, to put it in line with federal and state policies. So, I just wanted to point that out, in case anyone was wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor, and none in opposition. It passes. We're on to item number four, an ordinance concerning obnoxious vegetation and amending sections, blah, 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 city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would make changes to Chapter 6 of the Eugene Code to allow the city more flexibility in how the private land portion of the obnoxious vegetation program is managed in the future by removing unusually prescriptive language. This management flexibility is important regardless of whether the vegetation program for private land is continued at its current level or reduced. We have heard the concern of suspending enforcement on private land that could occur. If the council does not support suspending enforcement of the private land portion of the vegetation program, I suggest that the council pass the ordinance, and that the council also direct me to include in supplemental budget 2, an appropriation for additional funds for the vegetation management enforcement.
Okay. So, I'm going to put it on the table, and we'll discuss it.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5141, an ordinance concerning obnoxious vegetation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I think that there's an important reason for this regulation. If your neighbor has overgrown vegetation, it can be dangerous in many ways. It can increase the supply of rats, for one thing, but mainly, it's a fire danger. And I think that if someone has obnoxious vegetation next door and takes the time to complain, that the city should be compelled to remove it. The way it is, the person can remove it herself or himself. And if not, the city can remove it and send a bill, and I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
I guess on its face, thank you, Mayor, I would tend to think it's a good idea for us to maintain this program, because obviously, that's one of the key jobs of the city, is to mitigate this kind of dispute that can arise between neighbors when one person's stuff is growing into the next guy's yard. That makes some sense, that when somebody complains, they should be able to expect to have somebody take care of it from the city and give appropriate sorts of input to their neighbor. I just find it so low on the priority scale compared to other things that we're going to be asked to deal with and to fund. When it comes to just park maintenance in general, I can think of at least five or six other things I think are more important if we truly don't have the money for all of them. And so, I don't want to make a decision on this right now, because I don't have proper context. Do we have the money to do this, or don't we have the money to do this, is my question? And we have said to officers doing the job in the streets downtown that when we cut the number of prosecutions the city attorney's office was doing, they were told it's because the city attorney's office doesn't have the money to do the number of prosecutions that we've done in previous years. And I don't want to have to ask for the list of the numbers, but I'm pretty sure the numbers have gone down. So, that's just one example, and we could probably sit here and pick out hundreds of changes we've made, because we don't have the money. I really would prefer to have this conversation in context to what else we need to spend money on, rather than have us make a decision right now.
One of the things, and we can sure do that, you might remember that as part of the budget process over the last couple of years, we have reduced parks' funding by several hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the general fund. And so, in order to achieve that reduction, one of those programs that was talked about was this particular program, which is a $50,000 piece of that.
And we just spent, what, unless I remember this properly, somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 that we don't know where it's coming from on the purchase of Civic, right? It was not a commitment we made. We're likely to spend somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 that we haven't identified yet.
You're talking about the pathway?
Yeah.
That would go through there. That could be transportation dollars or... That could be transportation dollars, or it could be general fund.
But we don't know for sure just yet. Thank you, sir. I think I made the comment I wanted to make on that.
Counselor Telenka?
I don't have a problem with changing the ordinance and getting rid of the strict requirements. I understand the problems that that can cause. But I do have a problem with eliminating the enforcement of the obnoxious vegetation part of this. In the university area, we have quite a few rental properties with absentee landlords that allow their properties to get out of control. And the enforcement of this, while almost hardly any of them actually go to actually going towards the city actually mowing the property for them, but the actions that we take to send them letters and encourage them to do that ensures about probably 90% compliance. In the absence of that, I think this is a real, I think neighbors would have little action or little recourse. And to me, this is a real quality of life issue. I hear a lot about this issue in my ward in particular because of those kinds of properties. And so while I support the amendment, I don't support eliminating the program. And I was a little confused by the city manager's language at the end about the funding for the program and how that would work, because I'm a little reluctant about for the change in the ordinance if it means we're not going to fund the program, enforcement program.
I guess what I was getting at is there's not money in the current budget. Let me put it differently. We are trying to reduce the parks budget by that $300,000 as part of the, as part of this year's budget. This was one of those planned reductions as part of that $300,000. So the choice is, if we want to continue this particular program, is to find different money for that. One would be is to find something else within the parks budget that we, has a lower priority and not do that. Another opportunity could be to find those dollars as part of our next supplemental budget, supplemental budget two, which should be coming to the council prior to your break or as part of July 1st.
And will you be making a recommendation about that as to where the funding will come from?
It would just be general fund reserves.
For this year, but for next year it would be?
That would have to be a part of a budget conversation, although I think that would really be part of the ongoing conversation of how we're going to maintain parks in a sustainable way into the future. And so I think that would be part of that conversation.
Counselor Brown? I mean, Counselor Charette, and then Counselor Brown, sorry.
That's right. Thank you. Well, I'm torn on where I'm going to land on this. I think some of what we're reacting to is it seems like a real taking our hands off of the wheel in terms of this particular issue, maybe leaning too far in the other direction from where we've been. And I definitely appreciate the budget constraints and that this is a strategy to get at some of that. But I wonder, reading through the changes and the purpose, that there might be some other way to get the flexibility to reduce the cost without just completely saying, "We're deprioritizing this, and you guys are on your own." And so that's what I'd like to see. So at this point, I'm probably not inclined to support the ordinance as written, even with the reassurances of the city manager that there could be a way to bring that enforcement piece back in. I did want to address something. I got a call from a constituent who was rightly slightly irritated that just today or yesterday, it was in the paper that we were going to be voting on this, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to note that, generally speaking, the media doesn't cover things until we've had our public hearings. And then we vote usually at the next meeting. And so that does mean there's a lag time for a lot of the general public to get notice of these kinds of small issues that don't get a bunch of attention before they come to a public hearing. So that's just the nature of how the city puts out notices and how the media responds to activities in the community. It's not a negative comment on the media, it's just the facts of how this happened. So it wasn't any kind of subterfuge to sneak this past, but just how things get reported is once we've had the public hearing, then they get the media's interest and they report on them. So I appreciate what staff is trying to do here, but I think this one was a little too, again, much leaning in the opposite direction of what we're hearing from folks they'd like to see.
Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. In another life years ago, I used to do surveys in the community about rating city services, not just this city but other cities, in terms of what people thought were important services to offer, how you would define quality services within the city. And one of the interesting takeaways for me was the number of times people rated the quality of their cities based on its ability to deal with, for lack of a better word, nuisance or obnoxious kinds of things. Barking dogs, loud parties, and obnoxious vegetation. And it would seem kind of strange. You'd think, "Well, what about streets and roads?" And yeah, of course, those are important. But when you ask people without offering any help what they want their city to do for them, they would often come up with these top-of-mind, obnoxious and nuisance kind of issues. That would be the thing that would occur to them, because they could feel that in their own lives. And so even though there's many things the city has to do, very important things the city has to do, for me, part of our ability to be responsive, and I've talked about how a city can be responsive before, one of the ways a city demonstrates its responsiveness is its ability to deal with nuisance and obnoxious kinds of things. And it may seem like a small thing, but in many ways, that is how we are judged. And so I can appreciate the balancing act that staff is trying to do, to try to achieve the kinds of efficiencies in operations. But I don't really want that to have to occur at the expense of what at least appears to be our responsiveness to the community around things that they care about. So I appreciate the reassurance that we could find the money to do this. And so if I were to vote for this tonight, I would only do it with the expectation that we would find the money to do this. And that's kind of saying, "Well, that's not part of this motion." So what I would probably prefer to do is to say, "I'd hold off on approving this," with the intent to approve it once you've identified a funding source to continue to do it. For me, that would be the great situation. That would be the equitable way to do this, is do what you want to do here so you can continue operation. But I don't want us to start backing away from our role as a responsive and resilient organization. That, for me, would be a difficult thing to do.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm really reluctant to approve suspending enforcement of, you know, a person's responsibility to remove obnoxious vegetation. I'm, you know, to save $50,000, I, can we get some kind of a breakdown on what that $50,000, what's involved there? How many, how many times a year? Is there a yearly average of people that you have to inform that, you know, it's gotten out of control on their property, and the city's going to come in and take care of it, and you're going to get billed for it, possibly with a penalty if you don't pay in a timely fashion? How many people take care of it themselves? Do we keep statistics like that?
One of the suggestions we have would be is you can table the motion, or I don't know if you can withdraw it if you're not ready to act on it.
Yeah, that.
So what I would suggest is that, we can have a table, that's fine, but be sure that you hear from everybody before we do that. So let's make sure that everybody's comments get on, you hear them before we move to table. Counselor Brown still have? Counselor Brown?
Well, I was just going to suggest, I mean, I think it's a really, we've heard this from a couple of other counselors, I think it is a really big quality of life issue, and I think it's a really big public safety issue because, you know, an overgrown lot with full of weeds and unmowed grass, and who knows what else is in there, because you can't see it, because it's covered up by the vegetation. When it dries out in August, you know, and we have like 95, 100-degree days, that's a fire, potential fire hazard too, in residential areas. And so I think maybe what we should do is try to put this in, it's not even vote on this ordinance, table it indefinitely, or just make it go away and try to find the money somehow through the budget process when the budget committee meets, and maybe people will have good ideas of where to find the $50,000. But I also kind of like a breakdown, you know, before we do that, of how this $50,000 figure was arrived at, and how many enforcements are made on a yearly average, how many people are notified, and how many times the city actually has to go out and someone doesn't respond, so the city goes and takes care of it and then sends them a bill. Well, how many people skip out on their bill? And what happens if they do that? I mean, I just think we need to learn a little bit more about it. Thank you.
So Mike, as you know, I raised questions about this and had some of the same concerns that people have talked about tonight. I do know that part of what was in the explanation in the ordinance itself was that you would give, they would deal with really significant issues without it. But I think for us, it's a policy issue that we want this to stay in place because we think it's important enough for this to happen. The only thing that I wanted to add to the conversation, Neil and I talked about that a little bit this afternoon, is from my perspective, if there's a substantial cost involved in us going, you ask somebody to take care of their vegetation, they don't take care of it. If there's a substantial cost in us going out and doing it, then I still think we could modify that and still give them, try to get them to do the right thing, and then fine them, and just manage it without us having to go in and clean it up if that's a significant cost for us. So that's just something else for you to consider. Okay.
I want to move to table this item.
Second.
Moved and seconded, no debate. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, none in opposition. It is tabled until somebody puts it back on the table. All right. Next item up is a public forum. Envision Eugene Urban Growth Boundary: Revised Recommendation for Housing. Those wishing to speak during this public forum must submit a completed request to speak forum to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public forum. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to comment on the topic. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have 14 people signed up. First one is William Ward, followed by Bill Close.
Under Betty Taylor, I lived in Eugene since '74. When I moved here, and I also raised a son in Eugene, I've worked my whole life in construction. When having to work out of town, I knew I'd always be returning to Eugene, the only real paradise in the United States. I am against the expanding of the urban growth boundary. We need our open areas. We need it for recreation, clean air, water, quality of life, health stop, global warming, and by not building on our farmlands. When the city of Eugene allowed building of 1,000-plus apartment units, being real estate, tax-free for 10 years, I was told it was to provide housing for the future and stop going outside of the urban growth boundary. The last time I looked on Craigslist, there was 600-plus vacant houses in Eugene. There used to be only 40 to 60 before all those apartment buildings were built, not to mention all those vacant apartments where some are now, in the past, and are now offering Caribbean cruises for a one-year lease. I suggest that you don't expand the urban growth boundary and don't issue any new house building permits until all those vacant 600 houses on Craigslist and all those apartments, new and old, are occupied. We don't need to create a dying city with empty houses, which I have seen in Detroit and Buffalo. And when you do issue new house building permits, the new house building permits should be required to be platinum energy-saving houses. And if any house is on a large lot, big enough, they should also have to heat their house by geothermal underground heat pump systems. We don't need to expand the urban growth boundary just to create money, money for land speculators, building contractors, and for the city of Eugene to reap more tax income like the city of Bend did for years and years. That was their main source of income. Let's not create urban deserts with poor livability like Bend, Boise, Sacramento, Reno, and Vegas, which they did for the big buck. We in Eugene want to help stop global warming and to keep the best of Eugene, which is our livability.
Thank you. Bill Close is up next, followed by Dan Cooper.
Mayor, councilors, I'm Bill Close. I'm a voter in Counselor Taylor's district, Ward. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the home builders. I have given you a two-page letter, which I hope to summarize in about two and a half minutes. I've been representing the home builders for about 20 years doing this stuff. They've stuck with me all that time. And I've reached my personal conclusion about, I mean, home builders are all about providing homes as efficiently as possible. And my conclusion from working for them is that the best way the city can do this, the most efficient thing the city can do, the simplest thing the city can do, is have the required inventory of land for 20 years, and have that land be developable under clear and objective standards. That way, when a developer applies for a housing development, she knows she's going to get an approval because the standards are clear and objective. If the standards are discretionary, compatibility, fits with the surrounding neighborhood, so on, then it's kind of a crapshoot. You pick your land, you file your application, you take your chances. If the staff and the decision-maker don't like it, you go back to go, you start again. Again, you know what that does to delay and cost. It's pretty simple. Last Wednesday, I think it was Counselor Clark to ask staff, "Do we have it on authority from the state that it's okay that we build our inventory to include land which is developable only under discretionary standards?" And staff said, "Yes, we do. We have a letter from the state that says that." I've given you that letter. It's attached to my letter. I ask you to take a close read of it. I think if you do, you'll agree with me. It doesn't say that. It's pretty squishy. I have also given you a written statement from the state from 1981, the first time the city did a total makeover of their inventory to come in compliance with this law. And the state reviewed the city's program, and they flunked it. They sent it back and said, "Try again." They flunked it because they said the inventory was not based on clear and objective standards. And here's what the state said. "The housing goal requires a demonstration in the plan that sufficient, suitable, and available residential land is designated under clear and objective standards to meet identified housing needs." That's the home builder's position. I don't think the program's changed in 20, 30 years, 40 years. This is a crankshaft issue. On this issue, I think the sun still rises in the east and sets in the west. But you folks need certainty. You shouldn't be guessing. This is too big of a question. You've got too much invested. And as Thousands Friend said in that little quote in my letter, "This is not something that should be litigated." So my suggestion to you is, let's pose the question to the state. We can agree on the question.
Thank you.
Pitch it to the state. They'll provide an answer.
Dan Cooper is next, followed by Renee Klaue.
I'm in Counselor Taylor's Ward. I am the CEO of DC Fine Homes. I kind of wanted to give you a frontlines perspective from a builder. I think there's a lot of math that's getting thrown out there, and I want to give you a kind of a counting of what we encounter every day as we seek real estate for our clientele. I think one thing about us, we do only custom building. So if you have a goal to construct your dream home, hopefully you call us. The challenge has been to accommodate your dream. I'm going to give you some stats through this. Hopefully, I can make it through in three minutes. But we have had 89 prospective clients since 2008 that have withdrawn their search for property after not finding adequate supply. I know that oftentimes, $200,000 utilizes the median income or the median price of homes, and if you go out and look in the real estate, it's very hard to find a new construction for $200,000. One of the biggest challenges is cost of real estate and availability of real estate. To give you some stats, we currently have 89, I'm sorry, 76 pieces of property under the cost of $100,000. 46 of these lots are actually designated Forty-six of these lots are actually designated as significantly or steep slopes. Five of these are flag lots, and over half of these reside in four main developments, three of which have been on the market for over five years. One of the challenges from a builder's perspective is not only if the cost of real estate is expensive, but also the topography and being able to actually build affordably. And I think what you'll look at as you look through the inventory that's available, a lot of it is flawed. There's soil issues, there's access issues, there's utilities that need to be put in, and then there's slope issues. So we can't build, you know, anything affordable for our clients. And as we urge people to not only spend 30% or less on cost of real estate as pertains to their overall cost of project, it is becoming imbalanced where we cannot accommodate, really, anybody. What it's done is, my company and my staff has started to look at the future and what we're going to do for the next, after the next two years, once we're completely out of land. If you believe that the stats that we actually have a lot of available land, I urge you to jump on RMLS and look at the available inventory to see if it's something that could accommodate what you would want to build. One last thing that isn't considered that I urge you to consider, and I'm going to run out of time here, but the neighborhood organizations, as they're empowered and they fight development, continues to make developers not want to pursue developing in Eugene. That is a side note.
Thank you. Renee Klaug is next, followed by Daniel Hill.
I work as an engineer and a surveyor, which means I spend a lot of my day helping property owners divide their property through the subdivision or the partition process. Something that I've noticed through that, and it's consistent through the whole city, it's not specific to just one region, is that the residents don't much care for density. I've had a project in the South Hills at 1.9 units per acre density, and the Envision Eugene process is assuming a 2.5 units per acre density. I had a project on Bailey Hill at 5.5 units per acre, and one in Santa Clara at 5 units per acre. The Envision Eugene process is assuming 5.6 units per acre for those same areas. All three of my projects, the neighborhoods were very vocal about, "This is too dense. We don't want this density. You need to decrease the number of lots." And yet, they're still below what the Envision Eugene process is assuming. And then, in addition, there was a recent code change to disallow flag lots in the Amazon, Fairmount, and South University neighborhoods. It's really difficult to do infill development without flag lots. If you remove flag lots from the table, your density goes down, and then you're even less than the Envision Eugene process is assuming. I'm not a mathematician, but it seems to me that you can't allow neighborhoods to push density out of them into other neighborhoods and not expand the UGBs. That density needs to go somewhere if you're allowing neighborhoods to push it out of their area. So it seems to me that the only way to not expand the UGB is to force densities onto residents that have been very vocal about not wanting those densities.
Next up is Daniel Hill, followed by Jim Hale.
My name is Daniel Hill. I'm an architect and general contractor and developer with the Arbor South Companies. I've had the amazing privilege of being in the design, construction, and development industry here in the Eugene-Springfield area for 35 years. I've witnessed tremendous change over the last four decades as it relates to the available land supply. Those changes are troubling. Eugene has an ever diminishing supply of buildable lots, especially affordable lots. As a developer, the difficulty in finding for sale land is at best challenging. When a property becomes available, it's not uncommon to have multiple developers vying over the same piece of property, which can even drive the cost of raw land up higher. It is also not uncommon to pay anywhere from $30,000 to $70,000 per lot for undeveloped property. With so many regulations related to stormwater, city approval processes, huge eWeb costs for power and water, and the actual cost of constructing the subdivision, it can be well over $30,000 to $40,000 per lot for those costs. This can put the average cost of a developer's hard cost at $60,000 to $110,000 per lot. And this is before any carrying costs, demolition expense, if there's existing structures and margins are added in. I might add that these numbers I'm quoting are for flat ground. Add approximately 30% to all of these numbers if you're building on hillside land with slopes greater than 12% to 15%. Many will say that density is the answer. In some cases, it is, especially in the core. Typically, higher-density projects, such as condominium projects, have even a higher development cost because of building fire and planning codes and added insurance premiums, as well as the legal cost to fight neighborhood groups that typically don't want higher density or medium-rise projects in their neighborhoods. As builder, a common formula we use in valuing the sales price of a speculative home is the 25/75 rule. The land value should be no more than 25% of the cost of the home. So using the math above, if my hard cost for a lot is $60,000 to $110,000 per lot before any profit, this means the sale of a medium-quality home will average between $240,000 and $440,000 for a new home. With the 2013 census report, it shows that the Eugene median income for an individual is $26,000. A household income is $42,000. The chance of homeownership is out of reach for over 50% of our population in Eugene. The reason I'm focusing on numbers is that home building and homeownership is a vital part of any healthy community. And with such a limited supply of affordable land, this can alter Eugene's ability to grow. It can also create a climate where only the rich can afford to own a home. As you consider the direction of increasing the UGB, please remember that home building industry adds hundreds of millions of dollars a year to the local economy, the tax base, as well as funding for parks and many other infrastructure projects through the system development fee process.
Thank you. Jim Hale is next, followed by Dane Butler.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jim Hale, 1715 Lenia Avenue in Ward 5. I spent 10 years on the committee that wrote the Metropolitan General Plan in the late 1970s, early 1980s. 10 years as a member, two years as the chair of that committee. I find it to be just almost impossible to understand, and we're still talking basically about the same urban growth boundary today that we adopted in 1981 or two, whatever that year was we finally got that done. It's unbelievable that we are still talking about the same line around the city of Eugene. It's really difficult to find a lot for somebody in Eugene, even in the South Hills, where we're planning on having a higher density, I understand from your, you've changed your numbers a little bit. The only lots left in South Eugene are the worst lots. If they were great lots, they'd have been developed 10 or 20 or 30 years ago. They're steep, they're difficult, they cost a lot to develop. But that's just the beginning of what the problem is. Go to 38th and Monroe, in an area around that area. The average house up on resale is costing $15,000, $20,000, $25,000, $30,000, $50,000, $70,000 to redo the foundation of the house because of the poor land that they were built upon. There was similar problems a few years ago over in Councilor Prior's Ward, in the Timberline Road area, developed by Breeden Brothers. South Eugene is no good place to build houses. And yet, you're not considering, you have not considered adding to the urban growth boundary out in Santa Clara, in northwestern Santa Clara, where we in the original Metropolitan Plan had an urban reserve area and where the federal government gave us sewer money to build interceptor sewers this figure out, okay, that are right at the edge of 200 or 300 acres of land in the northwestern part of Santa Clara, south of Beacon Drive. I appreciate that we should never take Eugene north of Beacon Drive, but we should not be considering the LCC Basin and southeast corner of town, when we've got flatland out there that we already have sewer service for, the Northwest Expressway for, available schools for. Are we planning, or are we just planning to not do anything appropriate? A question whether we really are planning for anything, we're really planning against things in the city of Eugene. If you would step back from your process a little bit and listen to the home builders, they're actually not just talking about their own interests, they're talking about the interests of the people of Eugene, people like my children, your children, who have now and will have a difficult time in the future buying a house that they can afford in the community that we all love. Thank you.
Dane Butler is next, followed by Paul Conti.
Dane Butler, Cal Young Neighborhood, Mike Clark's Ward. I'm a numbers person, so I own a small business in Eugene, and I took a tally of the people we work with, and it's about 100 people. And I took a quick inventory of where those people live, and 80% of the individuals we work with live outside the city limits of Springfield in Eugene. 100% of them work in Eugene, 80% of them either choose or have been forced to live outside the city of Eugene. I did a calculation on their yearly commute from Veneta, from Cottage Grove, from Junction City, No-Tie, Crestwell, Drain. And in a given year, their daily commute is like me driving my truck 40 times around the circumference of the earth. And I keep hearing about the city of Eugene talking about 20-minute neighborhoods, 20-minute neighborhoods. And I really want to know when we're really going to get serious about keeping our workers living in Eugene, and when we're really going to get serious about keeping our families living in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Conti is next, followed by Ed McMahon.
My name is Paul Conti. I live in Ward 1, and the gentleman spoke before me. I think he was well-spoken and hit some of the points that I'd like to make. It's hard to be sympathetic with some of the folks from the Home Builders Association that have shown up tonight and are blaming neighborhood associations because we'd actually like to maintain our livability. It's also kind of hard to be sympathetic for them because they got in bed with the city manager with his debacle of Envision Eugene, hoping they were going to be able to cut a deal and being promised that they would. So I'm not too sympathetic to their concerns, but I'm sympathetic to the concerns of people who are not, unlike my wife and I, not as fortunate and have lower household wealth and who will suffer the consequences of the implicit policy and the city manager's so-called analysis and proposal. I want to comment here that the city manager promised you four years ago he would bring the home builders and Thousands Friends and Friends of Eugene arm-in-arm with a third way because we were going to expand to a vision for the city. Well, you can see what you got. That's because it wasn't a legitimate process. It was people trying to cook deals behind the walls. So now it's out in the open. It's a train wreck. And I'd ask you to step back and think about this. If there's any vision for Eugene, it's one of conservation of our resources, using them wisely, and equitability so that single-family homes or homes that are attractive to families that may not be single-family homes are not just the privilege of those of us that are better off, but are accessible to those families who work hard, play by the rules, and don't quite make as much. And the policy that is implicit in what the city manager has brought to you is one that is very, very elitist. It will consign, sure, there are going to be the dwellings. Mia Nelson can give you the math on that while she drives back to Lowell. But the policy that is implicit in that plan is one that consigns lower-wealth families to block-style apartments on busy roads, and which leaves single-family homes, condominiums, and other type of more desirable, pretty much across-the-board type of housing to those wealthier families. We need to step back, and this is something that I hammered from the beginning, and it's why I've been such a harsh critic of this flawed process. We are not taking into account the actual economics of what goes on here. Now, I can't get into it in detail here, but I will simply ask you to do two things. First off is, let's get the evidence. I'm agnostic on the urban growth boundary. It's a line on a map. It's not a policy. It's not truth. It's not preserving land that we want to preserve. It's just a line on a map. So let's get the evidence out, and then let's have policies that actually look at the people we want to be able to live in our community.
Thank you.
And make sure they can afford it. Thank you.
Ed McMahon is next, followed by Kurt Walstedt.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Ed McMahon, and I'm proud to be the executive director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County, located at 1065 River Road. In late 2011, after a lot of intense work, a very diverse group of technical resource members successfully completed an analysis of Eugene's buildable lands inventory. The HBA was somewhat disappointed in the outcome, but was willing to continue the Envision Eugene work and focus on the Pillar 7 monitoring and urban reserves while waiting for a new population projection, hoping that could be the fix we were looking for. Recent developments would appear to remove any need for single-family urban growth boundary expansion. Due to these recent developments, and to be in service to the local housing industry in my membership, I must once again bring up an issue the HBA has tried to correct for years. Should the buildable lands inventory be calculated under clear and objective standards or discretionary standards? I'm confident of the correct answer, and it is my sincere hope that the HBA's current efforts will lead to a clear ruling from DLCD, which would avoid an appeal and bring the entire Envision Eugene package to a successful conclusion. But not having a crystal ball on before you this evening to suggest that the council separate the single-family package from jobs, parks, and schools, there is no reason to hold up jobs, parks, and schools for the single-family disagreements. Do know that my current builders and developing members are very concerned that Eugene will be out of buildable lots within a five-to-six-year period. I have evidence dating back to 2009 that shows the local housing industry was the third-largest employer in Eugene, behind the university and Peace Health. Please consider the economic impact to the city if the UGB is not expanded for single-family. Also consider what the lack of buildable land will do to the price of housing. Where is our affordable housing going to go? Currently, they're sending teachers and firemen to bedroom communities where they can find housing, they can afford, thus increasing vehicle miles traveled. No doubt, this story will continue to develop, and I'll try my best to keep you current on the HBA's position. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you. Kurt Walstedt is next, followed by Bill Slattery.
Hi, I'm Kurt Walstedt. Thanks for hearing me. I'm in Mike Clark's Ward, and I'm the owner of a small business here in Eugene. And I have 10 employees that work for me, and I care about my guys greatly. I provide them with healthcare, I provide them with sick pay without being told to, vacation time when they need it. And I get concerned about these guys. They're young men, they're 30 years old, a lot of them are breadwinners, where they don't make huge wages. And I'm concerned that if we don't have affordable housing for them, they won't be able to have the American dream, which is to own a house. Currently, two of my employees do, the rest of them don't, and they'd all would like to. They would end up being like Dane was saying, where they'll end up living in other areas, where they won't be able to buy something in this town. And I just think it's important, and I can't believe that you would consider keeping the urban growth boundary the same as it was in 1981 until 2031, I believe is what the numbers are looking at, and how that's going to affect the cost for these young men that are working hard, just want to get by, raise a family in this community, and become part of the community. And I think it's important to reconsider where they're at with this and look to the future so that these guys can stay here in this area, raise their families, and become a better part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Slattery is next, followed by Marty Peetz.
Good evening, council mayor. Thanks for an opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Slattery. I am in the Council Brown's Ward, friendly street area. My background is, I am a builder and developer. I started building in the southeast hills in 1975. 1975, Spring Boulevard, the top of the hill had not been developed yet, so I bought the top of the hill. 1980, I went broke. So I will tell you that hillside development is expensive. It's expensive and risky. To ask that the city of Eugene not expand its urban growth boundary with the hope -- To ask that the city of Eugene not expand its urban growth boundary with the hope that we can provide dense infill in a hillside fraught with many, many, many problems. Houses are expensive to build. Mr. Hill said 25, I would say 35, 40% more. Foundation costs, drainage costs, bridging of driveways to sloped sites, expansive clay soils. Another gentleman talked about damage, excuse me, to foundation systems. Currently, I'm a retired builder. I am a construction investigator. And what I do is work for insurance companies to find the cause of a failed system, mostly residential and some commercial stuff. And I will tell you that most of it has to do with drainage and soils and little else. The 38th and Monroe area was condemned a long time ago as having slipping soils, and it's not a good place to build. You look up in the South Hills and you look at the steepness of those grades and the water and drainage issues, and Spring Boulevard is not named for the time of the year. It has water popping out of those hillsides all year long. So I urge you to take a look carefully at the thorough thinking that is needed to really expand the urban growth boundary. I don't suggest that you try to stick 15,000 to 30,000 future dwelling units in the southeast hills, but I think that to not expand the urban growth boundary is a foolish decision, simply based on my practical experience. I have developed small parcels. See, Oak Knoll, which is on about 29th and Lincoln, if you want to go up there, you can see, that's about an acre and a half, and we were able to get, I think, two-fourths, about six houses on there. But we squeezed them into very tight spaces, and it's not that difficult. But $25,000 to $30,000 per lot was what the cost was when I developed that 10 years ago. So again, I think you need to take serious look at the expansion of the urban growth boundary from a realistic standpoint. This isn't a math problem. This is a practical problem. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Marty Peetz is next, followed by Mia Nelson.
Mayor and Councilors, my name is Marty Peetz. I'm a member of the Home Builders Association of Lane County, also a subdivision developer. And over the last 15 or so years, we've done about 650 lots in Eugene Springfield, most of them in Eugene. Due to land use restrictions placed upon the urban land mass by the city of Eugene and the state of Oregon, together with what otherwise would be moderate federal restrictions, the city of Eugene is ranked in the most expensive 13% of affordable housing communities in the United States. It's an ongoing program of the Stern Business School at New York University that collects all the information from all, from 186 communities within the United States. And once again, the cost of housing in Eugene is in the most expensive 13% when they compare the cost of housing with the median income. The Envision Eugene planning staff will encourage you to maintain that UGB boundary in its present location. That effectively requires home builders and new home purchasing public to absorb parcels that have stayed vacant for a good reason. Case in point is a subdivision developed in the South Hills in 2007. The 29-lot subdivision was built upon land similar to many parcels that are listed as developable in the Envision Eugene inventory. Today, of those 29 lots, 22 are unbuilt. They're unattractive to the purchasing public, number one, cost to develop is extremely high. And once again, you end up with a home that only a modest portion of the buying public can afford if they want to live on the hillside. The reality is, the land mass that can provide affordable housing in the city of Eugene, within the UGB, is incredibly small. We were fortunate enough to put under contract the Eagle site, which has been rezoned recently. And there's another site of 34 acres that is going to be in front of you soon. Those sites are priced at roughly 100... Pardon me. The increase in price of those sites has gone up 30% over the CPI over the last 15 years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mia Nelson is next, followed by Mike Reader.
I'm Mia Nelson, representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon in Eugene. I'm here to provide some more information regarding the error that I brought to staff's attention. At the last meeting, some of you asked, "Why now at the 11th hour?" And it's simple, really. Several months ago, a citizen asked me how the TRG arrived at its hillside density assumption. I didn't remember the details. It had been three years since we did the work. I simply went back to my notes and emails to refresh my memory, and while studying them, I realized we made a mistake. And I told staff, and it's really not anything more than that. One thing you may not know, the error happened because midway through our process, the home builders asked the TRG to switch to an unorthodox method of calculating the South Hills capacity. The TRG agreed to do that. We gave them what they asked for. We switched. Our mistake was that we didn't then go back and align the land and inventory with the new approach. Now, in a perfect world, the home builders would have been the ones to come forward and tell the TRG that we had not applied their special method correctly. They didn't do that, and I did. But isn't it better me than nobody? Isn't it better late than never? And I'm really puzzled why any of you would see correction of that error as unfair. Are we keeping score on errors now? Is it even possible to have a philosophical objection to reality? Perhaps the perception stems from a misconception that UGB evaluations are a political process, like a give-and-take, where sides are taken, babies are split, outcomes are predetermined ahead of time. It doesn't work that way. It's facts, evidence-based assumptions, and legal requirements that drive the outcome and not our personal wishes. Believe me, I am just as disappointed as the home builders. I do not want to see a 700-acre expansion onto farmland, but Thousand Friends does not, and I do not evaluate proposals based on whether or not a UGB expansion is the outcome. Instead, we should ask, "Does the proposal comply with the law?" And I urge you to do exactly the same. In my five years with Thousand Friends, I've seen cities succeed with UGB expansions and I've seen them fail. The very worst outcomes happen when proposals are reverse-engineered to cater to personal philosophies, or when individuals or groups with a financial interest convince cities to bend the rules, go out under thin ice for them, take legal risks to accommodate their wishes. Eugene is very lucky to have knowledgeable and cautious staff. They've done an exemplary job of protecting the city from these derailing forces. They've also done a tremendous amount of work. So I would like to express my respect for staff, my admiration, and thanks. It's been an honor to work with all of you, staff and council, for the last five years. This has been a monumental task, but we have finally reached a milestone, and I think that Eugene has a great deal to be proud of today. Thanks.
Mike Reader is the last one up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Mike Reader. I'm at 800 Lamont Street, Suite 800 in Eugene. I'm an adjunct instructor at the University of Oregon School of Law, teaching land use. And one of my guest lectures is Mr. Arnold Kogan, who will be coming on Wednesday to discuss Oregon's statewide planning system that he helped craft. He started in 1969 as the policy advisor to Governor Tom McCall and helped craft Senate Bill 10, which was the precursor to Senate Bill 100, which has given us these statewide planning goals, the laws that Ms. Nelson and others have referred to. In my discussions with Mr. Kogan, he's made it clear, and I've asked him point-blank, as someone who is a novice compared to Mr. Kogan, I wanted to know, were urban growth boundaries meant to be static? Is there something special about the location? Are they fixed? And his unabashed, clear answer was no. He has testified to you in a different forum that that is the case. They were never meant to be fixed. Urban growth boundaries are meant to be pliable. Now, are there competing interests about expanding urban growth boundaries? Of course there are. That's why we have Goal 3, to protect ag property, and Goal 4, to protect forest property. However, there is an inherent tension, and here in Eugene, staff has proposed a recommendation, it's a preliminary recommendation, mind you. You're the ultimate decision-maker at the local level. But that recommendation is not to expand the urban growth boundary. And has been testified tonight numerous times, that would mean effectively that the urban growth boundary for single-family homes would not grow for over 50 years. I can't put a paper bag over my head and make a straight-face argument that that makes sense and that that will comply with the Goal 10 rule. We've talked a little bit about data, and staff will talk a lot about data. The number-one issue, the number-one assumption, is the population projection of 34,000 people in the next 20 years. Staff acknowledges, Thousand Friends acknowledges, we all acknowledge that that $34,000 new residents is artificially low. It's artificially low because the number, the percentage of population assumed to come to Eugene in Lane County in that 20-year period was figured to be 44%, when historically it's been 61%. Over the last couple of years, it's actually increased to 71%. We know that that data point is wrong. So to suggest that there's this one data point that has skewed the data such that we no longer need an urban growth boundary for single-family homes, that's only one consideration. There are multiple considerations and policy assumptions that need to be made by this body, and I encourage you to take a hard look at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And City Council.
Going to close the public hearing and look to council for comments. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone coming tonight. I thought Mr. Reader's comments there at the end were interesting. That's, on a side note, that's always been a very interesting point, that we established the UGB in '81, and over 34 years, it hasn't moved, and we're looking at a 20-year planning horizon, and we say it still doesn't have to move for over 50 years. That just flatly defies logic and common sense for anybody. It's silly. The thing we need to do, though, I agree with Mia. Let's get the best information and follow the law. Now, we heard a lot of great information tonight, at least from my perspective, there were a number of fantastic points, but a lot of them were about the politics and the outcomes. And like I've said, that we wouldn't expand in 50 years defies logic. What kind of community do we want to build in the future? That's an outcome. It's politics and an outcome. I don't want to live in a community where the only people who can afford to have a single-family house have, you know, a mini mansion, and anybody that's a young family or low-income is relegated to a tenement cubicle on a busy street. It's just the wrong way to plan a community. And that's where we're headed with this direction. So if we're going to talk about this as outcomes, we're heading in the wrong direction. But again, I agree with Mia. So we should look at the facts, and we should look at the information, and we should make a determination that follows the law. When we act in quasi-judicial fashion, when we're presented with the request for zoning change, we are presented with the evidence and with the facts, and we're presented with the record, and we have to make, as best we can, a decision that follows state law. Similar effort here, it seems to me. So we've heard a couple of complaints that we haven't had all of the information from minutes from the TRG and all of the data points that were used to develop this recommendation. Let's get them all out as publicly as we can and pull them apart, because we, as a council, haven't heard everyone's input on those yet. And we heard Mr. Reader, again, just talk about the fact that the first data point is the population projection. We know it's wrong. So if we're going to follow the law and do this properly, that's probably the first one we ought to adjust, because we know it's wrong. So if we're going to do this, let's follow the law, look at the data, and do it appropriately. Let me have a second round, if you would, Mayor, because I have another couple requests.
Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'm not so sure that we know... We do know that the population projection is wrong, okay? But we don't know that it's too high. We don't know that it's too low. It's a projection. We won't know until the 20-year period is up how it's going to shake out. As I recall, the last time Portland State did a population projection, they were too high. They thought Eugene was going to grow by a much higher figure than it actually ended up growing. So we don't really know about that. What I would like to see, we're supposed to take action at this Wednesday's work session, and I don't think I'm really ready to, because I don't think we have enough information. I really would like to see minutes of the TRG's meeting when they discuss these, you know, the change to the, in the buildable inventory, like the increasing the density of lands over 900 feet and lands on steep hills. I'd like to see, I never really saw, we never saw data at any of our work sessions regarding these changes of like, you know, delineating before and after the new information became available, the mistake became available. We were told, "Well, it's online. All the spreadsheet's online." Well, I've looked, and I haven't been able to find it. It's possible that's just my, you know, being uncomfortable with finding the data online, but I've searched and searched, and I can't find a coherent set of data. So I'd like to see that up by Wednesday, too, and minutes from the TRG's meeting, to know how the discussion went. I think we need to know this before we vote on it, really, because I don't feel comfortable. I feel like I need to know a lot more before I'm ready to cast a vote on this, because, hey, you know, it's a projection for 20 years. It's a big deal, and I think we need more information. And I think also the public should have a little more time to analyze, because I think they're having a hard time finding some of the data, too, not just the people like us who've been involved with it closely. So, I mean, a little delay isn't going to kill us. It's been, what, six years? We've been working on it for six years, so, you know, another two or three weeks, I don't think, will kill us. But I just feel like I will feel more comfortable voting on this if I have more information. Thank you.
Professor Ritt.
Thank you. So, thank you, everyone who came to speak. And I definitely appreciate the issue of high land costs and housing costs here being high relative to wages. So supporting policies that help raise wages is one way to get at that issue. And I have to say, there's no evidence that I can see that the two places we had under consideration for expanding the urban growth boundary were going to be built with housing that was affordable to mid-income families. The costs associated with developing those lands was very, very high. So I am not convinced that that was going to be a bunch of affordable housing built if we did expand the urban growth boundary. So I actually would be very willing to sit down with anyone who came here this evening who can show me how, if we expand the urban growth boundary, we're going to end up with affordable housing for families that many of you spoke to tonight, because I didn't see it in those numbers. And, you know, as staff noted when they brought these recommendations to us, and the recommendations on expanding for jobs and other parklands, this is really just the beginning of consideration of those recommendations. There is still a lot of process to go through. So even though while I tend to agree with Counselor Brown that we might not want to pass these recommendations on Wednesday, even if we did, that's not a done deal. There's still a lot more process to go through. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, the woman who spoke, I'm sorry I didn't catch your name... your name, who talked about the negative reactions to density in established neighborhoods, I think hit the nail on the head for, at least my perspective. When I came on this council and started to engage in this conversation, I really see that this council and others involved in this process do have a real value around creating more density in our current UGB area, but yet we have a lot of residents who are not enthusiastic about that idea, and so we're finding this conflict. And I don't have an answer to that, but I think it's something that we all need to be aware of and try to figure out how to work together to figure that out, because there are a lot of people in this community who do not want the UGB to be expanded for various reasons. So, you know, I think we still have a lot of conversation left to have.
So I just want to clarify one thing. Weren't we told that we were to base, I mean, required to base our work on those projections? Yeah, the population projections.
The population projection is actually set by the state, and that's been adopted, so we're not able to change the particular population number.
And that's what we're required to use as a basis for our work.
Right. That's actually a set assumption at this point.
I thought that was true. And earlier this evening, Sean Bowles, who's part of this TRG, told me that there's, I think there's like four studies that were part of their, the work that they did on this with the TRG. Can anybody clarify that? He said the evidence is there. There were four different-
Different kind of options that they looked at, yeah. Is that what you mean? Like as far as, I guess I'm not sure what you mean.
I guess what I'm asking is, some people are asking, where is the data? And my understanding from talking to Sean is that there was data, there are four different examples of data that they used in their deliberations. Is that accurate?
Yes, and so their meeting, the information that we provided them is online, except for the notes at this point, which we're getting finalized through them. We are sending the additional refinement of information to them that they're reviewing, but it's really just minor stuff. The base data is online under the TRG meeting information, but I can understand how that would be difficult to find if you didn't know, to look there.
So is it easy for people to access when they just go to the, to our city site? Is it obvious where people should go?
Yeah, if you go under Envision Eugene, and then you go to public, I think it's Public Involvement and Committees, there's a link to the TRG there.
Can you put something on the front of our page that tells people, here's where you go?
Sure, absolutely.
Simple? Thank you. All right, Mike, I mean, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, feel that we need to wait, that we're not ready to act on Wednesday predominantly, because as the mayor just illustrated, in working with staff, even for us, it's not clear, simple, easy where that information is. We owe the public a chance to weigh in on that information with us before we make a decision. So, as it's not even clear right now, or it wasn't until just now, we haven't had anywhere near enough time, nor will we between now and Wednesday, for the public to weigh in on that data, and we really owe that to them. So that's step number one. Step number two, when we first, when we worked on this Wednesday before last, and I brought up the point that why are we altering this one piece of data at this moment when there are so many other pieces of data that can be tweaked and develop a different result? Why just this one, was my question. The answer was, well, we know this one's inaccurate, so we want to make sure, because we want, and that's exactly what I was saying before, let's follow the data, let's follow the law, and make a right decision. So subsequently, I asked another question in that meeting about the law. Emily gave us an answer. It's at odds with what I've heard from not just Mr. Close, but from other professionals. I don't doubt Emily. I have great respect for her ability, but the question is in doubt, and we have an obligation to make a decision based on the answer to that question. Now, I saw you taking notes when you mentioned that. I'm assuming it's not a complex deal for us to get a response from DLCD prior to our decision about the question. Shall we make a decision based on clear and objective standards? Do we have that obligation? Because I read the note from DLCD, and it seems pretty clear to me, we have that obligation. That's why I asked the question last Wednesday. And I'm here, and staff, Emily say no, experts say yes, the letter reads to me like we have that obligation, and I have to make a legally binding decision? I need to hear from them, and that's easy to accomplish. So can I assume that we'll be contacting them to ask for their guidance, like we asked the Attorney General in advance of some legislative decision?
I don't know what's involved in that, so I don't know what the answer is yet. We'll get back to you. I'll have to check with our legal folks.
I'm pretty sure, based on other input, that I know that that's a request one makes, and I know that all sides would like us to make a decision based on the appropriate form of law, whether it be Thousand Friends, whether it be the home builders, and it should be us. So if that takes a week, as I suspect it may, to get an answer, I hope that we can petition and write, because if the city can't per se, I certainly will.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's a basic logic here. It makes more sense to build on flat land than it does slopes. Just ask half of the people in California whose houses are sliding down the hills somewhere on a regular basis. You can, you know, flip on your TV at any point in time and see something on NBC, ABC, or CBS where somebody's house is being, you know, just sliding down the hill as a result of weather, poor planning, poor development. We have, I want to point out the fact that we have housing developments being built right now, have been built through the recession in northwest Eugene continuously, and there's others that are on, on, on the planning. I agree with Jim Hale's point that, you know, we need to be looking at where housing can be built that is going to be stable and functional for people. You know, for us to be looking at slope lines and other things at the 900-foot level and trying to determine whether or not that that's going to be viable, buildable lands, I think is dicey to begin with. We're going to have more people. The assumption that 34,000 is going to be where we're going is way under what everybody I know that I've talked to about this, what I've looked at and researched, is just not a realistic figure, although we are now legally bound to deal with that figure for the, for the time being. So, you know, I see that we need to have some more conversation around this in order to determine exactly where we're going to go based on the constraints that we are under, both legally as well as logically, because we need to be really, really careful about this next cycle of planning for this community. If we are not, I can tell you from, you know, growing up in the Midwest, when people don't plan properly, you get a lot of junk. And we, I didn't move to this side of the country to be engaged in that same junk discussion that people had back in Ohio and Indiana and Michigan and are currently suffering through now. So I think we, it behooves us to do this in a way so that we can get it right, as right as we can.
Okay, that closes that discussion, and before we close the meeting, Counselor Ritt would like to make a comment.
Yeah, thanks. Just, timing wasn't good to make this comment earlier. On our consent calendar, I just want to note that we filled a vacancy and appointed Raquel Hekt to the Police Commission, filling a vacancy there, and I personally think she will be a great addition to the Police Commission, and I wanted to acknowledge that earlier. Police Commission Vice Chair Tamara Miller was here, in case we had questions, and so I appreciate her coming down. I also appreciate this appointment, because Tamara and I have been the only two women on a nine-member board for the past couple of years, so it's nice to get a little more gender parity than we've had, and I just wanted to call, call out that appointment of Raquel Hekt. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for your work this evening.